I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you please lead us in prayer?
Come on, Fatherhead, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening to take care of the business of this city. We pray that the decisions we make and the directions we go will be pleasing to you and pleasing to our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, the reading and approval of amendments from November twenty first, please.
Motion for go the reading, approve amendments.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Sorry.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor of approving these amendments? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the agenda. Monty, did you see there an addition or change?
I did. Five B.
Okay. Fire Department Building Addition. Okay, if we can approve the agenda, that'd be great.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Weidrich.
Second.
And second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Five A, Engineers Report. You can see on here, Monty, correct me if you see it different, but you can see we had one bid on televising and they did seven, the map. Monty?
No, they actually did have four bidders. This is the low bidder.
This is the low, okay.
This was the low bidder.
All right, so C.C. Steel is the low bidder. Forty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, and that's... Who more is recommending the go is? Now, the PAR grant is a hundred percent grant to clean and televise the sewer mains, as you can see there. I guess the order is kind of backwards how you have to approve it and then, and then apply the grant.
When I spoke to Jared, he's got the application ready because he said if you're going to proceed with them to approve a contingent upon state funding. That way if the funding isn't available anymore, you're not tied in to do that.
Okay.
And we had some discussions this morning. One of the other benefits that we'll receive out of this televising is also determine where in town, if at all, we've got some materials that would need to be updated and changed out at some time in the future. Some of the old style asbestos type material.
So then are we gonna do, do I guess, every sewer line in town here?
I'm not sure. That's what they did.
My understanding was it was everything that hadn't been done within the last three years, three years, I think, of what we're here.
Yes, sir. Who owns these videos? You know, like engineers claim they own the drawings and plans and stuff.
They're ours. My understanding, all of our stuff through PACE has been ours.
You have ownership, not just a copy of them.
Correct.
Correct.
So we'd be looking for actions, might potentially to let more know to submit?
The PAR grant.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Pillar to go forward with the PAR grant. Second. Second by Stern.
I'm not sure what they were thinking on the timeframe for this. I don't know that it's crippled, that we do it during the winter or anything like that.
No, that's my understanding.
That makes good sense.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Rule call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye. I think that's it for the engineer's report. Am I right, Monty?
That is correct.
All right, Fire Department Building Addition. Mr. Beer, is that why you're here?
Ah, come on in.
All right, come on up.
I'd like to put a forty-by-ten addition on the north side of the building. And right now, the estimated cost will be over two-hundred thousand dollars. So I believe we have to put it on bids, since it's over that limit.
I think it's got to weigh over the money, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, two-hundred thousand is the bid limit. Anything less than two-hundred thousand doesn't require sealed bids. Anything over that requires sealed bids.
Remind us a little bit what the function's gonna be for this?
Ah, it is for private vehicles, pretty much. It's already full. And we're buying one more new truck and don't really have a spot to put it. We're gonna make room for the time being, but we've been talking about putting an addition on this building for twenty years, ever since we bought that lot for most of twenty-seven years ago, and it's never gone for us, so see if we can get the ball rolling on it.
So, um, we're buying another truck. What are you buying?
Ah, Earl's buying another truck. We're gonna add one more gas truck into the department.
Um, we have an empty bay on the very west side, right?
Uh, currently.
People use the watch-a-vehicle.
Currently, we have our command vehicle sitting in there. And when we buy this new gas truck, it will be completely full. We'll have the new gas truck and this command truck in there, and then she's maxed out. But I would also like to put a drive-through in on the north side for our large trucks, so that way we don't have to back them in, and we don't have to worry about hitting doors and backing over things as we go in.
How are you paying for it?
I don't see how much money you're gonna give me, and I don't see how much money I have to give from Earl.
What have we owned for the new truck yet?
Couple hundred thousand.
A lot, yeah.
I know when we had discussions on paying for that, that fire truck, that was, uh, we talked about having a lot of flesh, people with fries and all that kind of stuff to try to make sure that we were staying ahead on that there, so I guess I'm a little concerned if we're still, still all six figures on the fire truck. I understand, you know, that it'd be nice to be able to spread out a little bit and stuff like that. Have we done anything to pursue what type of grants, if any, might be available out there? Have we done any light work on anything?
As far as the grants for buildings, for fire departments, they either are a lot of grants to build in new buildings, but as far as additions or remodeling or things like that, no, not really. But we're, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of grants out there for new building construction, but not much for anything else.
Well, if you put a breezeway between your building and that, would that categorize it then as new construction or new building? Are there ways of getting around that to, to help you out from a financial standpoint?
Nah, I do not, but you know, and it would still be attached with the breezeway, so I don't know. And mostly it would be federal grants.
Are you planning, taking the north wall down, just making it one big?
No, I'm just gonna cut out about three days, and then the only way to build it is to put a breezeway in there. So, yeah, I'm just gonna open up about sixty feet, about fifty feet, I think is what my measurements, in the middle, and we'll just put a breezeway there and then build a new building on the north side of it.
How big is that building now?
Uh, just, uh, hundred-and-twenty by forty?
Yeah, I'd say about forty or fifty.
I'd say it's forty. No, I know, because both gas trucks fit, so it's probably sixty by one-twenty, if I had a guess.
So the two-hundred thousand, is that for concrete, dirt, plumbing, electrical, or is that just?
That's everything.
That's everything? It's, that's concrete, everything, driveways?
Heated with the furnace in it and everything. What estimate I got, doors, that was all the works. But it'll be, the bid will be north of two-hundred thousand, closer to three, three plus. And I've already secured some funds from the Earl, but...
Define some.
Can't give you a price, but I'd say.
Five thousand, fifty thousand.
Probably closer to a hundred. But that's not a set deal we had either, so...
When are you guys, what was your thought of construction or bid time or any of that stuff, correct?
Long term, no one's gonna start till spring anyway, so.
So some you want done this upcoming year?
It would be nice, but if... It would be nice if we could do it within next year, but if not, I'd be willing to push it back one more year, but at some point, should've been done twenty years ago. But at some point, I would like to get it going.
Yeah, now, maybe this sounds foolish, but maybe there's a grant out there that we do just build a whole new building and tear down the existing and, you know, I don't know where we put our trucks in the meantime.
Yeah.
Or where we house everything, but...
Or even if we have, I don't know.
Is that, maybe is that a thought process?
It could be a thought process. A lot of departments, they just abandoned the old building, like I turned it back over to the city, but then we would need a lot and we'd have to move it somewhere else in town. And there's a couple of departments down the state I've seen that do do that. But I don't know if the state's got any lots they'd be willing to get rid of, but...
Yeah, there's, we can clear avenues to go that way too, but this one's already outfitted. Questions?
I guess I'm just with you, Jerry. You know, I mean, I would just rather build, I mean, all new, I think, if we're gonna spend, I guess, I don't know, you know, but...
But if you're talking new building, if anything close to that size, you're probably probably short of a million or four million, and I don't know if there are any grants that size out there. I haven't seen any of that size, but I'm not saying there's not, I'm sure there's.
Right. No, I, I think that'd be a wise decision. We're, you know, we're talking about that building and heating and, and we put a lot of money into that thing, you know, trying to keep it energy efficient.
On, but on this new addition, I was gonna put propane forced air for instance, right? And the price I saw for that furnace wasn't that much.
Sure.
Compared to what would be electric bills now.
Could that entire back lot, if on the north side of the building, could that house a whole new facility? Know what I'm saying? You know, build, build them back on the north side of that lot. Once it's done, we lure trucks in, we take, tear down the old.
Hold on. I would say probably. It's pretty close to the right size.
You know, we just, we just did our budget here about a month and a half, well, two months ago, and we didn't really plan on any of that.
The nicest thing I was thinking about this was that it'd be a drive-through, especially for that, because the new truck's forty feet long. Not, everyone's really back in that yet, so if they could just drive in, it would help a little bit.
Sure.
We don't hit very many doors, but this happened.
All right, well, yeah, okay. You know, I drive through Dunn Center, Minot, wherever they just sat the other day. Velma, brand-new buildings, beautiful buildings. I would love, maybe we just need to explore a grant first, something like that.
Okay.
I'd, I'd feel better putting money into something brand-new like that. I'm not sure if there's any matching grants or what there are out there, but I don't know, it's... And if we, if that doesn't happen, when are you, are you gonna come and ask for a certain dollar, or are you gonna wait till you get bids?
We would, we'd have to put it on bids first, from what I understand, because it'd be over two-hundred thousand. Then we'd have to see what we have for bids to come back, I think, before we go further. I don't know.
Do you have any drawings?
Do have one drawing.
Okay. At the next meeting, would you mind coming back? Monty's checking how big that lot is right now.
About a hundred-and-twenty feet from the building to the, to the end of it.
Okay.
But that ditch is there, too?
Yeah.
Is that, that orange, yeah?
Yeah, I went back to here basically.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Would you come back to the next meeting and bring, bring a drawing or some more information or?
Two weeks from now. Well, I kind of have a quote now. I don't know if I can submit it, but we haven't put it on bids yet, but
Right.
I have a drawing, but yeah, two weeks from now I'll be on night shift though, so, no.
Okay.
That's fine, we, I mean, we could.
First Monday of January, you know, and we'd have a first and third Mondays, so... I, I wanna repeat another thing that I've said to you guys before. I appreciate the heck out of what you guys do. You guys are awesome. We are, we are a fortunate community to have the services that we do have. I, I can't tell you how much you guys appreciate it, and I know your, your force is getting smaller and smaller, it seems like. And I just, I, I wanna support you guys however we can. Obviously, we've got a lot of questions, we're concerned about how, you know, what kind of money we have to spend and to give, but it's hard to say no to you guys, because we, you do a great job, but we, we might have to say no.
Well, I understand.
Yeah, I know when we, we put the budget together for this next year, you know, we're, we're looking everywhere we can to, to cut just so that we can move snow, so that we can, you know, have, have a police force, you know, all, all of those types of things. So it makes it doubly challenging.
Well, I understand.
So that, that's why I'm asking the question about how far have we gone on, on pursuing what type of grants are available and all of that type of stuff. I wanna make sure when we make a decision, we've done all the light work that we can upfront without wasting a lot of people's times and stuff like that.
Well, if I found a grant for a million dollars and it had to be fifty-fifty or something, would you consider it a bet or not?
I'd say we look at it. Absolutely, I'd say we look at it.
It's always worth a discussion, no question.
Because that's the other thing, if I spend twenty hours looking for grants and finding one, I don't just wanna get kibosh and I walk back in.
Could happen, but at least we don't take a look at it and see how bad one is, so.
And be, and be creative on the use of the space, other than just garage storage or, you know, if there, if there's something else that...
It'll be, it'll be medium range.
Just have some, some of that stuff, I, you know, bullet it out and stuff like that, so, you know, certainly, when, when you're talking that kind of money, public perception goes a long way as well, and if they say, well, jeez, they're just building a big polearm to put the, you know, to spread their fire trucks out so they're not running into each other, that, that's a little bit harder to sell than, you know, something to where they're doing some training, safety training, internal and stuff like that, so...
Technically, we're over capacity already. Both of our grass rigs are not in a bay. They're actually in between the two bays. Is it a get to grass?
You gotta get a truck out.
You gotta get one grass rig out before you can get the tanker out, you know.
When you say beyond capacity, beyond your comfort or capacity, or are there actual rules out there that say beyond garage doors?
So the two grass rigs are actually parked in between bays, you know, and then those other two beside it are shifted over a little bit to get them in there.
What other expenses are you gonna see this year for, for gear, bunker gear, or anything of that stuff?
Most of it, then in the last few years, we've cut down a lot more or else we've paid for ourselves, I think. I haven't seen my budget now, but I know tens of thousands out there, and I was last year too, and probably the year before that too, so... We've been, as far as bunker gear, been paying for a lot of that, and we split that fifty-fifty with the early, and I bought all my earpaks last year, so should be good in under ten years. I mean, as long as.
So is he gonna take some of that, that money then and apply it to its principal on the fire truck lawn, or?
We've been putting more, at the end of the year, we've usually been transferring more into the reserve.
Good.
Twenty years from now, we go to replace that truck again, it's gonna be over a million dollars, and currently, I think, we're putting five thousand dollars a month.
So you're gonna build, build each of that fund for the future and then just sticking with your payment plan? Okay.
That's what has been happening. Fair enough. Like five thousand dollars a month for twenty years, it's not even gonna be.
No, five thousand a year.
Over five thousand a year.
Okay, can I have the five thousand a month?
I think it's a great project, and I hope we figure something out, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. That's great, yeah. Yeah, we sit there and don't wanna spend forty thousand dollars on a snow gauge, you know, it's, or sixteen on a snow blower. All right. Moving on. Uh, seven A, Snow Removal Ordinance Revisions. I've not, I've not heard anything negative from the community. I've only heard positive things about something like this happened, but normally people that talk to me about these things are not defenders, so.
Feedback that I received was, sounds great, who's gonna enforce it and how will it be enforced, and who makes the decision as to, you know, they were pointing out examples, and they said, they said, drive here, drive there, you know, to see some piles that got put up this time that are relatively close to maybe some of our places, but nothing seemed to, you know, there is no ordinance against it right now to, it just says, please don't do it. So that, that was the only concern. They said, you know, it sounds great on paper, but how, how is it gonna be enforced? What is your game plan in terms of your communications with, you know, if it's gonna be the Police Department or if it's gonna be City Public Works? Or who, who's going to identify the, the folks that are not abiding by the ordinance?
Well, it's like, like anything else. It's boots on the ground, you know, we are Street Department for one, and I would hope our police officers that, you know, they're on, doing this for some time as well, that they'll be involved in that too. We will probably get phone calls from, who knows, Joe Q. Public, who will say, hey, this is happening. I don't know, but... I, the feedback I got back was positive. People think it's, it's a good thing. People like, I'm hearing more, now I'm starting to hear more positive about the way we did the snow removal versus the, the mass complaints that came early. So I, I like it the way it's written, I guess.
Yeah, so I heard, I guess, you know, like even if the plow is gonna plow the snow into there, then, into their, I guess, like driveway, I guess. And that snow then, it's supposed to go over on their yard? Is that the way that we're gonna work it now, or? That's what mine, I don't know, that was concerning.
Sure. I don't know where else it's gonna go. I, you know, someone wants to haul it out, they can haul it out, I suppose.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure that's gonna be a complaint. Well, that wasn't my snow to begin with. That was the snow from the street that you're now pushing into my driveway, and I had a heck of a time getting rid of the snow just from my driveway in the past. You know, we heard from a resident last meeting that said, I don't have a lot of frontage, frontage area there to put the snow, then what?
Yeah, and that's what their point was, is that they already got, you know,
Limited space.
A pile like this, now they're supposed to, you know, just move all that other snow on that pile, you know.
But we're not the only city that has that issue, so I mean, that's, yeah. And, and again, the comments that I received were just asking about enforcement. They thought the language looked good, if that, if that could be enforced and taken care of.
My guess would be how the enforcement goes through the police department, and whether they see it or one of Dave's guys see it and let the Police Department know, but they would be the ones enforcing it.
So would that, yeah.
We would just need to make sure that there's communications going and saying, in case you weren't aware.
I kinda talked to Jim about this, like, first time or so, you know, just a warning, sure, don't do this again type of thing. I mean, we don't have to start writing tickets to absolutely everybody right away on it, you know, but it seems like, especially over my area, it's the same people constantly pushing their snow, their two inches of snow on their driveway, out into the street and not into their yard. You know, and then the city doesn't plow it. That's more what I'm worried about, is when the city doesn't plow and it gets left there in piles and it gets drove over, and then our streets are extremely rough. Not so much when we get seventeen inches of snow, because everybody's struggling then.
I would make a motion to accept as a second reading the language as presented.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Rule call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye. Okay. Now the books. Nine A, Water Sewer.
I've been working with more engineering. They have reached out for, for some quotes now that we have an audit system for monitoring the conditions of our new water storage facility up there. We have kind of an infrastructure in place that we can build upon, and we've been talking about for quite some time. Lift stations, tying them in, automating some of that, the reliance on red and green lights and, and sometimes the public alerting us to, to situations and using pagers, also some antiquated technologies and stuff out there. They're, they're in the process of getting quotes. They did get some quotes to give us kind of an idea from a budget standpoint, so I'll be talking with Monty to see if we've got some cushion that, in that particular area of our spend to see if we might be able to go after a couple of the key lift stations next year, but that's something we're gonna continue to have conversation on and try to move forward with. Something like that.
I think it's valid, you know, but be good to start pecking with it instead of all at once and just crashing down.
Based on the bids, you know, my comment back was, that might be a good business to get into, but there is nothing cheap anymore, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jason's not here. Dave, what's going on in the Street Department?
Well, we're just tidying up some of the windroofs, still cleaning, widening a little, some areas and working on intersecting some of the color piles so they have, but there's a baby opening corners and some emptying equipment, and ready for the next blast of snow or whatever.
So do you think that the way we remove snow, this, this big seventeen-inch, it's, it's hard to compare apples to apples, I know, because of the amount of snow, but is it more efficient, do you think, doing it the way we did it, or the old way is more efficient?
I think this is probably a little more efficient. Couple growing pains or whatever, you know, we realized pretty much right off, right afterwards, we didn't go wide enough, so that took more time with the next, next goal. We're all, you know, we go curve to curve and left, we cut down a lot of our time.
Okay.
And it is, it's getting tougher to find areas to dump snow when you haul it. You know, seems like every year we lose areas where we dump, you know, pile our snow or whatever when we do haul it or whatever, I mean, there's areas are getting developed and used for other things, so no, this is, I think, out quite good.
Okay, good. Let's have. Sure, let's do that. Did you bring this?
I did. Monty brought my attention, somebody'd asked about the possibility of putting a snow blower on. on that, on your tractor and using it, so I went out and, and I just made some RDO to see if the tractor hydraulic system would support a snow blower, they came back that you'd need the PTO driven, pay power plant for it, but. So it's kind of an informational thing or whatever, I think it would be, we talked about it at the shop amongst ourselves, um, hundred percent needed, but it would definitely help. There are certain areas where instead of plowing that with a bigger snow blower, that moves a little quicker, you could actually just blow a couple, a couple of areas instead of leading it and then blowing it or.
So if we have availability of the park boards unit as well?
Yeah, if they're not using it, we'd use theirs.
Then, then that takes, takes away from, like you said, this isn't a necessity, but it certainly is, is a useful.
Useful, one of the advantages of a snow blower on that, from getting from point A to point B is way quicker than a Bobcat. You know, so you're driving to lift stations to blow, you can order that tractor across town way faster than the Bobcat or whatever, but, yeah, we've used Park and Rex this year, we had both blowers out and loaders and stuff in the different streets and stuff.
Is this a, is this a wider unit than what's on the Bobcat?
Little bit wider, yes.
The one thing, I, first of all, I think it's very expensive, for one, and I, it's half the price of, thing or half the price of getting a snow gauge, getting that unit, but I, I think it'd work well, but one thing I do like about it, you're sitting up higher in the tractor.
Yep.
It's easier to see what you're doing, I think, than sitting in the skid steer, you know, three and a half feet off the ground, I think that would be probably pretty nice. Be a nice unit, right? Think we should watch if we can find a use of it maybe, or, you know, watch the, I know there's no warranties to use stuff, but who knows?
I'm sure if I got a hold of Mr. Ripley, he would keep an eye out for it.
Right. Sixteen thousand, five eighty, and it's not gonna be cheaper next year, for sure. Okay, any, any questions, thoughts? Let's keep, keep that in mind. Do we use the blade, can we use a blade at all on that, on that thing during the snow? I know not the seventeen inch.
I've laid in a couple streets or tried or whatever, but at that depth,
Yeah.
with no tire chains or say chloride in the tires for the weight and it got overwhelmed where you could push the snow blower through.
Mm-hmm.
I did Buster's Street, like running up towards Buster's, I've laid that with a snow blower, you could have, you could have blown the whole thing.
Yeah.
Start on one side and the guy goes, "Well, could have blown that whole street as a try to follow it or whatever."
Yeah. You wanna visit with Dave Ripley or then we'll keep an eye out for it, see if they're, if he ever sees something else, to go to the shelter.
How did they get those hydraulic lines all the way up to the front? Did they run underneath the tractor then?
It comes with a whole kit, he wasn't exactly sure, I talked to him this morning. But I think it comes all complete with controls for inside the cab and that was all, that was an installed price or whatever, it's.
Alright, thanks Dave.
You know, there's a possibility, you know, a guy would just get like that power unit maybe the snow blower that's on the Bobcat would couple on the front of that tractor, you could use the same, same snow blower, but just use this power unit. That's a, I, I didn't get a chance to visit with him on, on something like that. Well, I think you'd still have your Bobcat with the bucket, being able to do something and you would maybe use that snow blower between the two machines or whatever along, if you had the power unit.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Alright, finance, busing, library. Police fire, forestry.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Buster.
I'll stand first a little bit. Uh, we've got some, got some meetings coming up, uh, Wednesday, we're doing our final focus group meeting for the Partners in Planning Grant, that's gonna be here at City Hall, that's at six thirty, I believe, we're starting. Uh, and then after that, hopefully we'll be able to get our, you know, they'll, they'll start working on their final document in terms of what are the improvements are that we're looking at, and I know that Jared and Marty have had conversations back and forth about how they're gonna roll in the city piece on that thing as well, so haven't seen anything more on it, but a couple other things coming up, and then Friday, I noticed that uh, the county is having a, uh, meeting, commissioners are having a meeting and Talon Metals is on the agenda, which would be the, um, for lack of a better term, the battery plant people. So I was thinking, I'll probably go to that to just listen, to see what, uh, that's all about. Not sure, haven't really, I haven't really heard anything more, I mean, everything's been pretty quiet, but I suppose they'll probably, I'm speculating that maybe they're gonna be in asking about a segment or something or whatever, so, probably we'll try to take that in. Uh, on the twelve.
When is that, Buster?
That's this Friday.
So that's a special meeting?
Yeah, yeah, eh, no, well, uh, you know, I don't know if it's a special, it's, uh, there's a lot on the agenda, so I think if they probably just moved it from Monday, I think they might have just moved it, you know?
I haven't, first I've heard of it, but I just got an agenda emailed to me for their commission, I haven't opened it yet, maybe not had the change of.
I think it might be a change from the Wednesday.
It, it must, they must have just made that.
Yeah, I, I got it today, I got it today, yeah.
So I'm thinking it's the one I got, so I got it today too, I just hadn't opened it.
What title does that mean, Buster?
Well, you know, see, so, you know, their, their meeting starts at nine, but, and I think they have stuff going until ten thirty and then they're on the bottom of the agenda, you know, Talon Metals, you know, they have about four or five different topics after.
Yeah.
So I, that's what I, I had hoped to do. Uh, next Monday, from today, uh, we're gonna have a McCade meeting over in Beale, like four o'clock. And then on the fifteenth, the Mercer County Coalition Group, which is different makeup than the McCade folks, some of the same folks, but different ones, but mostly the mayors and, uh, planning and zoning at that one. And that one is going to focus on having our legislative body there in attendance and, uh, our legislators today, tomorrow and Wednesday are, are at the Capitol uh, getting orientated, uh, for the upcoming legislative session, and so they will be getting their committee assignments, uh, those kinds of things, so by the time when our, uh, meeting takes place on the fifteenth, they'll know what their assignments are and what committees they'll be serving on, so then hopefully we can hear a little bit more from them in terms of what they have in mind, uh, that type of thing, and then there were a number of us that attended the Coal County Committee Meeting last Wednesday, but I'll let the other guys talk about that a little bit. Any other questions for me? Okay.
Thanks, Buster.
Yeah.
Yeah, last week, uh, Mr. Pillar, Mr. Weidrich, and I went to, and Buster, were at the Coal County Conversion Meeting, Annual Meeting, and we heard from some legislators and industry, um, and a lot of, a lot of discussion about what's happening in the world of energy, and it was a very positive, I felt very good after that meeting. Probably, you know, a lot of good things are happening right now in Mercer County and not just, uh, you know, that, that's, that includes Oliver County, Mercer County, McLean County, that's the Coal Conversion County.
Sheridan as well, I think.
And it's Sheridan there, Jim?
Sher, is that right?
I believe so.
Sheridan, Sheridan, yeah, okay. Oh, that's right, because of McCuskey, is McCuskey Sheridan County? Yeah, because of McCuskey.
I know it's four counties, I'm pretty positive, Sheridan.
So, um, and then, you know, we had speakers, uh, from Coteau, Ernoff, Rant, and Coal, Base Electric, you know, talking about, you know, you know, I really wanted to hear, want to know what's gonna happen at Base Electric after the first of the year with, uh, their agreement with Bakken Energy, but I think that's still, uh, probably, when the first of the year comes, I don't think we're gonna hear that morning, so it's gonna, probably gonna take a while yet, but, um, legislatively, you know, there's a lot of things that are gonna be happening, to be watching for, posting incentive bills with, uh, with Coal and, uh, you know, one of the big things, what talked about that night was how the, um, oh, remind me of what Vlad, Vlad Erickson spoke about, which, which state group was it that had the, uh, gosh dang it.
I'm not sure, Jerry, are you talking about the ESG stuff?
Yeah.
ESG.
Yeah. Yeah, it's talking about how they wanted, the monies that were being allocated towards.
For fossil fuels.
Yeah, yeah.
That they.
Is, is staying, staying with fossil fuels and not being used for, I guess, what was the word? Destructive, no, disruptive.
He was talking about destructive financing against, or raising insurance rates and stuff like that for organizations that are involved with fossil fuels and stuff and the inequities that are being presented out there and how they could work around those things.
Yeah. Yeah, and talked about the possibility that maybe it would make in North Dakota, we could do some bonding.
Correct.
That the, um, fossil fuel folks could do some bonding for certain things.
And not have to rely on outside entities.
And not rely on outside forces, because the outside forces are anti Coal, you know, they're the green folks and they're, you know, wanna lend money, not necessarily.
It'll be an interesting, uh, winter, um, at legislature, you know, we, we'll be hearing a lot about these bills, so, anyhow, that's, that's all I have under my report. Moving now to twelve A, police department vehicle. Go ahead.
Well, we can't find a vehicle within a time or matter. I did, bought one down in Texas, it was a build date of, um, January thirtieth from this, um, Codwell Country Chevrolet, they have two coming in that aren't spoken for right now. He didn't give me a quote on it, but this is a quote that he gave from Waller, uh, or gave to Waller previously. So I would imagine it'd be pretty close to that quote, plus shipping, obviously. Then they, they send them to Cap Fleet and they can outfit them right there instead of us sending it to telecommunications to transfer everything over. This would be basically all brand new stuff except for the radio, the radio, the radar unit and the dash cam, is what they reported.
With these vehicles then, because it looks like they're black?
Yes, correct. Um, the only ones he has come in.
And we're not paying them.
No.
So we would have a black.
We would have a black, if we went to.
Got it.
Um, according to what we've heard from Hazen Motors, is they may be able to order at twenty-four come January to February.
Is it a chip?
Maybe. Might have to pull it out of the open.
Or in January, February, is it possible shipping of when? Nope.
No, uh, no, um, I think, didn't he tell you, Monty, something about ten months possibly?
Yeah, it could be as much as ten months.
As much as ten months before we got it, and that's an SSV, uh, which we've been buying before as the SSVs, um, this one from Codwell is a PPV. So like that email, they have the steel wheels, the stiffer suspension, all the bigger coolers, bigger fuse boxes are in on that, um.
Bunch of Blues Brothers cop upgrades.
Yeah, all the cop upgrades, extra horsepower, so. Not saying we have to go down that route, but as far as an iPhone, that's the quickest route we would have. In on this, I, there's also the light bars in on this, which we just put a light bar on that old one, so I would see if we could take that light bar off of here.
Eighteen hundred ninety-nine bucks?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was having wire and do the door anyway for me also.
Yeah, I mean, we could take it off, but you're really not gonna save a whole lot of money. Two thousand bucks probably total, by the looks of it. But then when we get it, alls we'd have to do is install our radio, radar unit, and then, and a camera. Everything else would be done, graphics would be on it, all that. This isn't set in stone yet, this was Waller's quote, which expired November twentieth, so it might be a little higher than that yet too. So I guess, we don't really have an option but to either fix the cam shop in the one we have or put an engine in it.
For eighty-five hundred bucks.
For eighty-five hundred dollars. But it did sound like Hazen Motors would give us crate, and after talking to this Cap Fleet, sounds like we can give them a list of stuff we want, they'll get it up, outfitted, sell it to Hazen Motors, and Hazen Motors can sell it to us, basically. Still go shopping local and still go through Hazen Motors. And then, um, Hazen Motors did sound like by trading in our old one, we could almost get.
Offset the upcharge?
Yeah, ob, offset the engine.
Replacement engine, if we put a replacement engine in, we'd get.
We'd get our money back on that basis.
Yeah. Not guaranteed.
Not guaranteed all of it, but at least most of it, we'd get back on it, which is for getting that back. Bad situation right now with these type of vehicles.
So the eighty-five hundred dollar replacement motor that's installed, is that high? Does it seem high?
Kinda, a little bit high, but it's all expensive nowadays, you know.
Can't you guys do it?
I'd do it for half of them.
Well, maybe we, maybe we look at something, you know, I.
Well, he might have warranty on stuff like that.
Tail light warranty, you know. Tail light warranty, I guess.
So our cost would be what?
Well, be half or whatever, basically.
Hundred and sixty-five, thirty-five thousand.
Here's fifty-five thousand, maybe, you know, two thousand plus or minus. This whole deal has shipping in on it, which confused me at first, because I, where did it say, yeah, delivery was zero here, if you actually go back into the outfit deal, the shipping on it. Yeah, so Swiss shipping, I'll see. Give her ten, um, but it wouldn't be black too. You would propose the black patrol vehicle? I actually like Mercer County's black ones, I think they look sharp. I sell them compared to them.
I don't.
Granted, they show the terms later.
I don't mind, I don't, I don't mind the color, but.
I think they said, I think Hazen Motors said they could get us the SSV for around this forty-six, five mark.
What's, what's the turnaround time from Hazen Motors on the engine replacement?
Oh, I guess I didn't ask that at all.
I never asked that either, because they haven't even ordered it.
Yeah, sure, and I, I asked the question.
Two months.
If you can get this one here by January, then does it even?
Build date is end of January.
Oh.
So it hasn't even built by GM.
That's very.
Um, so this would be a twenty-three model combo also.
Yeah.
So from what, talking to these guys, um, they order a massive amount of vehicles from GM as soon as they open it up, and they even order more than they have split in. as they open it up, and they even order more than they have split in four. These two were part of those that weren't spoken for. At one time, he told me they were ordering eight hundred vehicles every year from GM with the PPV packages.
Well, we changed the motor out on our existing one, we know we have availability of it. I don't know, you know, how long out it is to get a motor in and stuff like that to, to do that, but we need to have something serviceable for, for the folks.
I would, I would say Hazen Motors would probably get it done in two weeks-ish, just guessing, depending on shipping times, you know?
And I guess it begs the question, you put a new motor in there, how long, how long are you gonna be able to operate that before you have to go down this path? Does it make sense to put eighty-five hundred dollars into it, assuming you can get it back out of there and still spend this money as well? I didn't, I'm thinking, I'm thinking not, but...
I don't, really don't wanna spend eighty-six hundred dollars, but, you know, the more miles we put on it, the more money we get for it on trade or...
We don't have a track record of giving a lot of money for our vehicles, we kinda run them to, to where they're just good enough to give to the fire department.
Yeah, you know, I mean, really. Well, and I see that partially being part of the problem. In the future, I would like to see an actual rotation of the vehicles. It'd be easier, the budget and everything, just whatever we came up with every four years, every six years, that's when it gets replaced, no matter how many miles are on it. Not just waiting until we have, you know, issues with one, or it's getting pretty high mileage, and we have issues getting one.
So, what are you proposing this evening?
Well, I would like to, I don't want to, but I think we should put the motor in the Tahoe, the new motor in the Tahoe we have, then go down this road and getting this through Cap Fleet. And then, with it going to Hazen Motors, we can trade in our Tahoe to try to get our money back out of the motor, basically. At least get most of the money back out of putting the motor in. I thought about maybe not putting the motor in, just trying to sell it as is, and hopefully waiting, and maybe in February, sometime, we could get that vehicle, but that's still a couple of months away with only running one rig.
Who has done the, the equipping of the vehicles for us in the past? Does Hazen Motors do that?
No, that's done at Dakota Communications, done in Bismarck.
All of this stuff, the, the light bar and everything like that?
Basically, a lot, most of everything is transferred from one to the other, so we don't necessarily have to buy all this stuff, but...
Do we, do we wanna look at what that quote would be from, from them for that part that Cap Fleet, or Codwell Country put in there?
For just for the vehicle without any equipment?
Yeah. I could see if they would do just the vehicle.
You know, I'm, I'm just curious how it compares to have them doing it in Bismarck or whatever, because if we're looking to take stuff off of our existing vehicle, we're not gonna send our vehicle to Texas, right?
No, definitely.
Right.
I know Chris told me that they send, like, the radio, they pull the radio out themselves, same with the radar unit, down to there, and then the people, they get their camera from, it sounded like came right to the PD to install it. But they would pull their units out of the old one and ship them down there, and then they would install it down there. We don't necessarily have that option, I don't think, because I don't think we have any spare parts like that.
Right.
Monty, do you remember what it cost us to, last time, with their...
It was between eight, nine thousand.
Eight or nine?
And that was just to transfer...
Well, there were a couple of pieces that they had.
Did they have to buy new? Okay, but most of it was to transfer.
Most of it was to stock.
And, and but everything here is branded.
And this is what the county specs are, so, there might be some cheaper options of some of it, you know? But after talking to Chris about it, he, he only picked good stuff, but he definitely didn't pick the expensive stuff at all. There's, he was explaining some of the equipment that I don't even understand, that they made a bunch of different ones, and he kinda went middle of the road, as long as it was American-made.
Butts?
If, if we went with the package here with all new stuff on there, is there, is there street value, you know, Hazen Motors is not gonna turn around and sell it as a, as a police vehicle, they're gonna strip it all off of there and stuff, and then sell it street.
I was thinking that light bar that we just put on, got our two grassroots at the fire department have old light bars on it, stopped up there before here, was talking to Cory, and that's not the case, we just replaced them, I think, a couple of years ago, too, so, thinking maybe we could sell that new light bar to the rule board, basically, or the fire department, we can upgrade. That option's not there either, but, you know, and most of the other stuff, I, I guess I don't know if there's any market on used equipment like that out there, maybe.
Depends on the dollar, maybe. So, I would say, I guess, you know, either, I guess, we buy this new one now and just not even do anything on the old one, or else then we do... Or else we do some, I guess, work on the old one, and then after that, order up, I guess, a twenty-four.
And there's that option, too, we could put this engine in, and just wait for the twenty-four models to get ordered. What do we, and hope, what have we been banned by going to the twenty-four model, other than obviously a twenty-four?
I think you would get that upcharge, or that outfit, I think that would be, be then, you know, it's not as much, and then two, I guess it would be then, you know, it wouldn't be then, wouldn't be then, I guess, like, black, you know?
So, you'd say, order, order a white one, or whatever, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. One of the lots, I guess.
You would certainly, I don't know that we're gonna save a lot of money, or any money with, with that particular plan, but, you know, we could use the new for, the new engine type setup for a while.
The only thing I could see that is stretching out a little farther, you know?
Kinda like that idea as well.
You know, and I don't know if Hazen Motors can order those PPVs, or we just stay with the SSVs. You know, they quoted us basically the same price for the lower model.
Hazen Motors ship?
Yeah. This is pretty much what, this is a PPV model on this quote, if I remember right, Hazen Motors for the SSVs, right at about the same, real close.
You, and there's your negotiating hat on, go talk to them again on that?
Try.
The only difference, obviously, is by local.
No.
Yeah, there's a lot of differences af, after talking to Chris Waller, between what this place does and the factory vehicles. These come, after you get them outfitted, they come with both white and red lights in the cab, versus just, you know, white. The SSVs that we get, you can't shut off the dash lights even after you shut off the lights, so if you're in surveillance mode in the middle of the night, I guess you stick out like a sore thumb, because all your dash lights are still lit up, where the, they go in and, when you make it, so when you turn your lights completely off, all your lights are off. There's quite a bit of difference after talking to him, between all of them.
What do you wanna do?
I like, I like Casey's idea as well, move forward with the, the motor replacement on the existing unit, and then we could dig in a little bit deeper with Hazen Motors and see if they'd be able to order up a PPV, if that's what it is, and see where that takes us. You know, and if we can get answers to those type of questions relatively quick, that, that would allow us to at least compare that path to this path, and see which makes the most sense.
Yeah, okay, see if they can give us a quote on one, two. See, the one that Monty did get on the SSV didn't really sound set in stone either, he was guessing.
Yeah, he was guessing forty-six to forty-eight.
Yeah.
So, tell him we need something a little bit better than, I guess, so that we can make some good decisions moving forward. Yeah.
Okay.
Go on there, I'll do.
I was told he gives vague answers like that, too, he might be able to order it January one or February one.
Might be, might, yeah. They don't even know, I was in there, talked to him today to see if even, if we went down this road where they would, you know, transfer it to Hazen Motors, if that would, they'd be willing to do that for us. He was telling me, North American Coal generally gets allocated so many vehicles a year, this, last year, they didn't get that, what they needed, just, just a shortage of vehicles, especially if the, these police packages, basically, is like, why, why would they build these when there's a shortage of civilian models that are a lot more money than these are? So, I guess I understand that on GM's part, too, they sure, they can make more money by not doing these special one-off type things.
Dan, I didn't hear your motion.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Will you repeat it, please?
Sure. So, the motion is to proceed with the engine replacement through Hazen Motors for the existing unit, and we will, the other part of, that, that's all the notion needs to be.
Okay, yeah. Motion by Pillar. Second by Weidrich, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Motion carried. January meeting falls on January second.
January second, which is the observed holiday for city staff.
You wanna keep there, or you wanna move it to Tuesday the third? Anybody have any preference? Monty, are you around on the second and third?
You can tell me you're here, I'll be there.
Yes, I know.
I have no issue with the second, but I have it on my calendar already for the second, so, I actually do...
I'm okay, I can see it the way, but I would just say that, you know, you know, just to, I guess, like, move it off, you know, a day, I mean... So, Tuesday the third? Yeah. I like that, too, let's give our employees their holiday, please.
Okay.
I think for the public, any meeting that you hold on a holiday compromises their ability to appear, if they want to appear, because nobody wants to interrupt their holiday to go to a city commission meeting.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay, so I'm hearing, move it to Tuesday, January third. For everybody?
Same time, same location.
Same time, same place.
All right. Okay, we'll do that.
Here we go.
And again, just a reminder that this Friday is our city Christmas party at the golf course, please, Saturday ten. Love to see you there.
Don't show up at the indoor, I speak.
That's right.
That's always wrong, too. Oops.
Guess I missed that part.
Okay, approval of bills, no, I'm sorry, thirteen public comments.
You're looking at me?
All right, yeah, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Sunny Brennan, I called Monty, I think, a couple of weeks ago about a business plan I'm slowly pursuing. I am starting a grooming business in Hazen, hopefully up and running by January, February. I don't have to be rezoned, but he said I should probably come to a meeting to look at this and what I'm doing.
So, Sunny, you wanna do this in your home?
Um, it's gonna be in a duplex in Hazen, that is owned, not rented. So, like, where the elevator is, it's kind of over there, by the railroad avenue.
Okay.
So, I'm right north of there.
So, wouldn't need to rezonate?
No, so long as there's not any boarding or anything, it's just a grooming business.
I might board my kids that are on the small island, but I...
You think of a few other people.
No dogs.
Well, I know it's a need in our community, science, so I'm glad to hear that. Good luck.
Thanks, I'm super nervous.
Appreciate the heads up, and there's nothing we need to do, Monty, observe first. Okay. All right, that's fantastic. When are you trying to plan to have this happen?
I'm probably leaving the meat shop at the beginning of January, and probably scheduling my appointments for the end of January, we're still renovating and making sure equipment come in, and all that fun stuff. I'm looking for my secretary, estate paperwork to come back, and business quotes, and, I'm waiting.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks.
Need a public comment? All right, then that takes us down to approval of bills. Motion by Weidrich.
That includes the transfers.
Yeah. That includes the transfers, yeah.
Second?
Second by Pillar, discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Pillar. Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you.